Over the last five or six years at the high school, this number has gone up and up and up, and the average has gone up and up and up. So kind of reversing the trend statistically there, that's really good to see. It just opens more doors for our students. I'm not going to put a whole lot of stock in the ACT score is something that's going to predict future success, but it is a door opener. And that's something that's important for our students.
So I think the challenge for the state board is their definition of success. Because I think if you look at their definition of success, it might not be the same as a parent's definition and/or our local community's definition of success. Because I think it's a pretty myopic view.
Okay, the progress component. This is a measure of students progressing from point A to point B, and did they meet their expected score on given tests? This is also called value-added growth. You may have heard that as well. So what it measures is how much our students grew from one year to the next. If you get an index score above two, then that's considered to be above, significantly above, expected growth. So for example, if you have 10 students that are expected to score 400 on a test, and they all score 450, that may be considered to be above exceptional growth. And it varies between each test in terms of what those numbers are. The fact that we have As in every building and for our district, for every single subgroup, every single group, that has never happened before. So our kids were experiencing above expected growth across the board. This doesn't look at individual students, and that's still something we're concerned with, but as a whole, we can say the average student got above expected years' worth of growth according to a state test measure, which is one measure of many that we would look at.
It's kind of amazing you could sustain that, like through different grade levels, right? That's pretty impressive, right? Because you would think like if you have like a real progress year for however you set things up or whatever, then it would be hard to do that in subsequent years or in subsequent tests and things like that.
And Thomas, you bring up a good point, which with the new state tests being as rigorous as they are, it's very difficult for students to max out these tests. So in the past, the OAAs were a little bit easier for students to score at a very high level. And so what we're seeing is that you actually get a better result with this because it is more difficult for students to always reach those top levels, so there's always room for growth. Kind of like the ACT and the SAT. It's very difficult to always score at the top level, so you can always get a good measure of growth from that. One other thing I want to point out is don't read too much into like, you know, the lowest 20%. This is, these are students at the high school who are in the lowest 20% of state achievement. That number is very small compared to overall, which is 10.36. Part of that is due to this index score is the average growth per student divided by the standard error. Statistically, we have a lot of overall students in the high school. So however many students tested, 500, 600 students. But our lowest 20%, that's an end size of probably 10 to 20 students. So when you divide the overall, that number gets much smaller from a standard error perspective. And when you have a very small end size, that number is very large. So in actuality, our lowest 20% of students could have more growth on average than overall, but they may have such a big standard error because it's a small end size that the index score becomes lower. The key thing here is that you're looking at, is it above two or not? And if it's above two, they're getting above the expected growth. To look at that and just make decisions or inferences based on the number would be statistically not responsible. Just a few other little tidbits with the progress. Ninth best in the state for our students with disability, overall 12th, and gifted 14th. We grew our kids.
So again, going back to the gap closing slide where you see, you know, the students with disabilities performing lower on the achievement component, this is that how much did they grow? So they're growing more than a year for a year, but they're still not hitting that bar, that threshold that was established for passage from a federal perspective.
And the other thing you've heard is our achievement levels here and our progress is here. And that's difficult to do. And it's something that's a testament to the work that our teachers do with each and every one of our kids. It's not easy to be a high achievement and a high-growth district. And we are. Okay, the last thing is the third grade guarantee. This is actually not a graded component. It's going to be on the report card, so I thought I'd take two seconds to explain this. This is just a measure of how many students were promoted to fourth grade from third grade, and how did they get there? There's one of three different ways they can get there. One is they pass the fall or spring test. So we had 147 out of 153 pass one of the third grade tests, either the fall or the spring. We had another six that met that bar through an alternative test like MAP. They have MAP scores that students can earn that will move them on to fourth grade because you're kind of putting all your eggs in the two baskets with a fall and spring test only for kids, and that's not fair to them. They need more than two opportunities. And then the other way is some students get an IEP exception. So we had 147 through the testing, six through other tests, and two through IEP exemptions for the 155. But 100% of our kids moved on to fourth grade. So that's all that's following.
What's the takeaway? I appreciate what you were saying on the English language proficiency and the subgroups where we were below the mark. And I'm certainly confident in the progress numbers, but is there a takeaway that we should be focusing on? I'm sure you're focusing on it, that we should know about how we address those English language proficiency numbers? What's the plan?
Yeah, okay. So, well, there's two things. One is students with disabilities. This is a statewide measure that looks at proficiency to a standard. So we have to align our practices to make sure that kids that are labeled as a student with a disability have access to the regular curriculum. If they don't, they are going to not meet that threshold ever. So there are some things that we're doing from a methodology perspective to align best practices to access to greater delivery of that content, okay? So, you know, one of the things that we've been promoting is inclusive practices, co-teaching, all of those things to give kids greater access to the regular curriculum. So that's one thing. From an English language learner perspective, you know, what we do is we look at the other assessment that has now changed. How many times, Gwen? Three times as well. It's now called the OALPA that looks at, within that English language proficiency category, how well are people moving towards language proficiency? So that is kind of the first step before they ever have to meet the standard. You'll hear a lot of conversation at the federal level because students that are new to the country do not get a pass on the state assessment anymore. They still, it doesn't count against you the first year, but they still have to take it. So let's say I'm a student and I move in brand-new to the United States from Japan, okay? I've never been taught English. I come in, I have to take that assessment, and I only have a year to gain enough language proficiency to take the assessment before it counts, so to speak. So there's a lot of debate about the rationale for that, and does that really make sense? I think what's most important is that they can demonstrate competency in their home language, you know, so that, you know, we can see how close they are to that bar or that threshold. But if there's one takeaway from the local report card that we are continuously looking at is that gap closing piece. You know, we don't want, you know, our majority population really outperforming and that gap getting wider. But also, what are the high-leverage instructional strategies that are going to actually make a difference for those kids that actually accelerate process or progress? The indication that we're getting above typical growth, but they're just not over an arbitrary threshold yet, is something that we struggle with. Because what is that threshold that is appropriate for that subgroup population?
Well, it's also indicative of the starting point, right?
Exactly, exactly. So again, you have to balance those two things out, but it is a constant conversation in our leadership teams about, you know, what are we doing for every single kid to help them reach their potential? And I think that's, you know, there are always good things that come out of the local report card release. They're becoming more difficult to find. But I think data only leads to more questions. It does not give you any answers. All you do is take the data and put it in the hands of the people that know what they're doing in the classroom and say, okay, what does this tell you about the performance of your kids? They know. And then you talk about, okay, so what's the best practice to get us there? Ryan, do you want to add anything to that?
I was just going to say, you know, for any of those students that we talked about in either category, the plan is as individual as the student. And so that's the, you know, some students with an IEP, you figure out very quickly, they just need some more time. They process a little bit slower. But in terms of extra support, that is the support that they need, where other students need more during the course of the school day, maybe even sometimes beyond that as well, that we need to help them to get to a certain bar. So those things are always on the table for students, and those are the conversations that happen in the IEP team meetings and through the RTI process that starts that out in whatever building that happens to be in.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm generally pleased with these numbers, and I say kind of generally just because it's not like they're a high priority for me. I'm very pleased with the education that we offer kids in Granville. How can we use this to like celebrate with our staff the excellent job we do without focusing on the fact that this is what's important to us, right?
Right.
You know, so like how do we like play that balance in both the community as well as like with our staff? Like, we are doing an awesome job, no matter what test they throw at us, right? But by the way, don't worry about the tests.
Right. We don't want to devalue, but we want to put it into context. So I think, you know, I actually was giving a presentation yesterday and talking to a bunch of community members about how we're redefining success. And the next thing that we're going to do is talk about our mission statement. But I think the approach that we've taken is to balance this information with the quality profile information that gives you that other look. This board has been very intentional about looking at the whole child. You know, when we developed the benchmarks five, six years ago that really drove our continuous improvement efforts, the first benchmark was intentional, the whole child. Then it was world-class education, then resources, then fiscal, sorry, Mike, and then community partnerships. So I think we have to continually look at those things and report out aspects of our school district that are noteworthy, but also drive continuous improvement. You know, I will tell you one thing, we will never get report card grades that, you know, we can sit back and go, yep, we're done. You know, pat ourselves on the back and let's move on. Because the day-to-day life of an educator, a kid always presents something new and different. You all are parents, you know that. So we're constantly challenged to meet the ever-changing needs of our student population because society's changing. So it is something that we use to drive continuous improvement. We do look at the information. We do look at our relative position to make sure that we're not missing something, but we also put it into context about the other measures that we're looking at that determine whether we're effective or not. So, does that help?
That does help a lot. And I guess, and kind of a follow-on is sort of how do we get out of this loop? You know, where do we stand with potentially a waiver or something like that to like set our own benchmarks that are really meaningful for us? And I think this is good to have this information, and you and you did well, but I think we need to reinforce the fact that this is not what it's about for us, for me, right? What's your thoughts on that, and how's that progressing?
So with the reauthorization of ESSA that replaced No Child Left Behind, there is some, there are a lot of conversations taking place about the evolution of the report card. I like to talk about it from the standpoint of an accountability plan, not a report card, which has a different connotation. You know, a report card seems very evaluative, where an accountability matrix really just shares information for districts to then utilize for their continuous improvement efforts. But there are a lot of conversations, there's a lot of advocacy going on to try and make this something that makes more sense to local communities, but also helps people in decision-making positions actually drive continuous improvement. So those conversations are happening. There is a waiver aspect that is part of ESSA. They're still trying to figure out the accountability plan piece before the waiver comes into position. But there are some school districts out there that have been kind of champion PBL, Yellow Springs, that has a waiver in place right now. Now, I don't know if that was honored for this year, but I know that they submitted under No Child Left Behind.
To the federal level.
To the federal level.
And the waiver allows them to?
To assess differently beyond the, or instead of the local report card.
So they don't have to take the state tests?
Correct.
Right. And so they wouldn't have any numbers?
Or it's a hybrid. They take some state assessments at different levels.
Do they still report on like ACT and SAT numbers?
No, I think it's more of alternative measures like survey results and some other things that are less tangible. But I would have to actually look at their plan to give you more information about that. But it's something as we evolve that we can look at. And, you know, I always look at what we've reported to you in the past. You know, we've looked at similar district averages, we've looked at, you know, growth and progress and achievement, but we've also looked at student participation in extracurricular activities. You know, participation in band, music, clubs, all of those other aspects that really also give us information about the quality of education that we're providing. I think survey data is critically important from our students to talk about, you know, do they feel safe at school? Do they have a person that they view as a go-to person, an adult that cares about them within the schools? All of those other things that we measure are equally as important, but they're not represented on the local report card.
I'm not sure if that's kind of a step we're ready for or when we are, but I think, you know, we're really thinking a lot and doing a lot of professional development, you know, like the old day-to-day on project-based learning. But as that evolves, you know, I'd like to see us be very open to like what the right metrics are in the future. And it's not like I want to ignore metrics where we're doing awesome, right? That's great. You know, it's nice to have that reinforcement, and we can maybe glean some insight from it. But I think, like you said, the board benchmarks or whatever we come up with, I think it'd be very interesting to redefine success.
I think we're in a unique advocacy arena because we really have no reason to complain about the local report card because it makes us look pretty good. So us advocating for changes to the local report card, I think, carries more weight with people that are decision-makers. This week, I'm meeting with the state board vice president. I'm hoping to meet with the president in the next two weeks, just so that I can share. Listen, we are a school district by your measures, whichever measure you pick, we do pretty well. And if you're trying to report out quality, these are some things that are blind spots for you and that you should know about. And we're saying this as a school district that's doing well. You know, for some of our large urban environments, you know, when they're talking about issues with the report card, it's very easily dismissed because they're saying, well, you're just upset because you're not performing well. Well, we are. And we're still saying that there's issues with it. So I think we're in a unique vantage point from an advocacy.
And it's very challenging to make one metric against which all school districts should be measured, right? I think that's the fundamental problem, because I think it's a local issue, right? So I think really locally, we define great education differently than what it might be on many districts in Ohio.
Our advocacy has been, report out at the state level the federal minimum requirements, and then let locals decide what other measures to report out to their communities that make sense to their communities. And I think that that approach gives you a differential picture because we're dealing with different issues in different places, okay? So I think that local control piece really would push it back on local boards to make those decisions. You have made some of those decisions in the past that I think have resulted in improvement. Actually, I don't think I know. So that has been the angle that we're pushing. Stick with federal minimums, report what you have to at the state level, but then let local boards really drive the other aspects of quality that they need to report, if that makes sense to you.
Just one last comment, and Ryan, specifically for you. I think that like, we get all this data, right, and it's kind of like trying to look through very fuzzy glasses, right? And I think, you know, a good statistician and a good analysis of data like looks really close and tries to focus, but like what I felt you do was like just take the glasses off and look at the students, you know? And there's a couple of cases specifically, like the K-3 literacy, where you looked beyond what the data said, and you thought about what the students, what matters to them, and that's what makes all the difference in that, which makes it a great experience here. So thank you.
Yeah, that's, you need to get credit to do in that situation. That's the principle of the teachers within that. You know, they're the ones that take that data and do something with it in the classroom. So, you know, we can do whatever analysis we want with all of this. You know, part of it is shielding them from the data that doesn't matter to, because that's a lot of noise. There's a lot of data that's just, okay, great, what's that mean? And it means nothing. So that's part of it. But they're the ones that take that and do something with it and get day-to-day data on that student to have those little victories along the way, because without those little victories, that student's not going to move forward. So that's what the credits do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you. That's very thorough.
Thank you.
And so it actually is kind of nice to have this conversation right before our next conversation, which really is about the mission of our school district and what we are all about, which is, you know, summarized, so to speak, in the mission, vision, values of our organization. So up on the screen, I'm intentionally putting up our school's vision because when you think about what it is we want our graduates to be able to do, this is what we have articulated. The Granville, you know, graduates of Granville Exemptive Village School District are well-prepared and empowered to be thoughtful, productive, and contributing members of their communities, and are equipped with the critical thinking skills and self-sufficiency necessary for success in an ever-changing world. So I want you to take that vision statement and think about the context of prepared for success that was just reported on the local report card. Those are very different pictures of what prepared-for-success reports out versus what our vision for an ideal graduate is. And I, for one, think that that is a powerful statement. You can tweak words here and there, but in general, it recognizes that the world is a different place than when we grew up. It's changing rapidly, and we want our students to be able to interact with the broader community and be equipped with critical thinking skills and self-sufficiency. Those are critical words in what we really want for our students that are walking across that stage. And I think whenever you're talking about the mission, vision, values, you have to think about what is the outcome that you're looking for? What is it that you're trying to produce? And in our world, it's not a widget. You know, in the business world, it's very easy. How many widgets do I want to create? What's their cost? And what's my profit margin? In our world, it's not about that. It's about the broader good of an educated populace and how they interact to lead our community in the future. So I wanted to actually start with something that I think is actually very well-crafted because I do think it gives you a picture of what we're trying to achieve. Now, again, you can probably play around with words and wordsmith that, but in general, you get a picture of, okay, that's what they're trying to create. And, you know, the next piece to this is our values. And I call this the mom-and-dad test. I have, I would never ask, you know, a student that came to pick up my daughter to date her what their GPA was. Honestly, it didn't really matter to me. But I do want to know if they have honesty and integrity and respect and, you know, they're compassionate. Those attributes are something that I think complement that vision statement that we just saw. You know, I love the fact that we start with acceptance and inclusion. You know, we've talked about how we tend to be a pretty demographically homogeneous community, and that we are trying to broaden their perspective of the world because it's not necessarily reflective in their community's demographics. So we're trying to broaden that perspective with the global scholars diploma process and global studies at K-6 and global language acquisition. So we're trying to work on some of those areas for diversity. Compassion, diligence, and self-discipline. That right there, the way we teach that is not necessarily in the classroom. It's outside, in clubs, drama, marching band, athletic competitions. You know, building honesty and integrity, moral courage, respect, responsibility, self-reliance, collaboration, and citizenship. Those are those 21st century skills, but dispositions or attitudes that I think are critical for our student body moving forward. So again, I think that has captured what we're trying to create and reinforce within our student body. And again, you could probably pick some other words to throw into that, okay? And you might be given that opportunity, so I'm priming the pump here, okay? And then we have some, our principles that also say, as an organization, student learning is our core purpose. You know, Ryan just kind of talked about that, that yes, some of the indicators of success are critical, but really it's about the individual students and their learning. That family and community involvement are important. You just heard about our recognition of this youth leadership council. Those things are important. High expectations that challenge each student and staff member. Again, that culture of continuous improvement that as an organization we promote. The professional skill development, you know, the board holds me accountable every year to build capacity of our staff. We consistently look at building high-quality strategic teachers that blend the art and the science of teaching. Those are hallmarks of a great organization. So those things are critically important to our organization. Innovation. We went through an innovation process, and it identified project-based learning as an instructional methodology that will help all students take their learning and apply it to life. Obviously, Tanya works on a clean, safe, and secure learning environment all the time. Fiscal responsibility, accountability, and stewardship, that's Mike's responsibility. It's all of our responsibilities. The curriculum instruction and assessment based on student needs, the learning foundations. Technology integration across the curriculum and the use of data to direct instructional practices, that's where we look at all of the measures that we have internally that progress monitor our students, plus, you know, moving to a more one-to-one environment. So all of those things talk about who we are as an organization, but what we're trying to create in our student population. So this is our mission statement, and I'm going to be completely blunt and honest. I don't think it tells you what we're all about. And it's a nice statement, but a mission statement is only as good as the people who use it and live by it. And if I asked my staff right now, tell me the mission statement of this organization, I would get a very low rate of success. That's a problem. Because it does tell you something about who we are as an organization and what we're trying to create. And so it does say that we are trying to create superior educational experiences for students in a personal learning environment. But I don't think that really captures the other aspects of the ideal graduate, the values and the principles. So when you look at what a mission is, is I like to use this analogy. A mission is something that you can say to a person when you're passing them on the street. It has to be short, sweet, and sticky, okay? And it has to be catchy. Vision is something, if you're riding on an escalator, you know, going up to the next level, you can articulate the vision statement of what you want as an ideal graduate. Our values and principles, you might need to get on the elevator, and maybe you're going to the 30th floor, maybe not just the 10th. Some of these elevators are really fast now. But it's something that you have more depth and breadth in your conversation. about the quality of your organization and what you value. So, I think what, what I have talked about with you in the past is I believe that we have to go through a mission rewrite, and we have to brand ourselves a little bit more intentionally about what we're trying to create with those ideal graduates that are walking across our stage. So, you know, our goal for this mission rewrite process is it represents what we want as an outcome, that people, staff, students, and parents, and community members know it and use it. One of the things that I think is a hallmark of a great mission statement is that everybody knows it and they hold you accountable to it. Because if you use it well, and it starts to brand your organization, if you deviate from that mission, people tell you, hey, that's not really what we're about here. So, I think that's a critical aspect of a mission statement. It cascades to every level of our organization, meaning bus drivers, custodial staff, food service, teachers, aides, principals, coaches, advisors, superintendents. Everybody has ownership at that level that they operate in within the organization. That's a hallmark of a strong mission statement. So, my example is be all you can be. Whose mission is that?
Army.
Army?
Army.
Okay? So, whenever you hear be all you can be, people immediately know what the Army is trying to create, okay, and sell and tell about their organization, okay? And if somebody within Granville Schools asks about our mission statement, someone's going to have to look it up, okay? That's a problem. We need to address that. And so, what I'd like you to do and consider and think about and brainstorm is thoughts about what our vision, values, and principles serve as a guide to developing that mission statement. I have some statements that I've been using already. I've been using them in my presentations. They resonate. They roll right off my tongue. You've heard them in my convocation. To me, you know, I like that Granville Schools is about applying learning to life. Pretty simple, but to me, it makes sense. Now, is that the one thing that we're going to pick? No. The board, the community, the, the building are going to go through that process. The process that developed this mission, vision, values was helpful for the organization. I think what happened is, is that the mission lost its stickiness, and that we can, we have an opportunity to rebrand, especially knowing the innovation process that we've just undertaken. So, I, go ahead, Thomas.
Just a couple of questions. What's the, the history of the vision, values, and principles? And were they created at one point in time or updated since then?
Yeah. So, they, from what I know, and Keith, you've, you probably could actually help me with this. This was created about eight or nine years ago.
With a strategic plan, last time?
With a, with a strategic planning process.
And that's when the mission statement was written as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And so, it was part of a broader strategic planning process. We've already rewritten the strategic plan because we, we focus on a continuous improvement methodology that's a pretty simple model, you know? Pick one thing and do it well. And we've, we focused on, you know, formative assessment practices. Now, we're focusing on project-based learning. So, we have that kind of down in spades. Now, we need to look at, you know, what is that branding opportunity for us to really capture what it is, is the essence of what we're trying to create? Russ, you're chuckling, so.
I was just thinking of all the brands that I wish weren't, weren't trademarked. Like Nike's, there is no finish line.
Yeah.
That's what education is.
Yeah.
But I, but I like the way you're thinking.
Yeah. So, so here's the thing. I want you to actually think about this and think about what, for you as a board member, what tells you that? What, what little, you know, statement captures the essence of what we're trying to do? So, this is your opportunity. You don't have to do it right now, but I want you to take a minute and brainstorm and, and use the vision, values, and principles because I don't intend to change those. I think they, they tell exactly what we're trying to do in, from an outcome perspective. I just think we need a, a different branding opportunity. And so, my next step is I'm going to be building, going to building meetings with each staff, and I'm going to talk to them pretty much in the same manner that I did with you tonight and talk about why I think there's a need for change. Then we're going to look at a small group to analyze some of the suggestions that are made, okay? And then what I'd like to do is bring it up for board discussion in October that, that talks about some of the results of those conversations. And then I'd like to come to you in December with a recommendation for a change in the mission statement. And I, I hope you understand that I am treating this very much in line with how I look at survey data. I don't do surveys for survey's sake. I use that information to drive decision-making. I'm not going to create a mission statement to put on a shelf. I'm going to build a mission statement that you, as board members, can use out in the community, that staff can use within their classrooms, that parents can use with their students and staff and community members, and that students can use to have conversations with the entire organization and community. So, that is, that is my point. That's my perspective. I've been in organizations that mission statements were not just words. They were actually used to drive every effort of the organization, and I think we need to get there here.
If I had a microphone, I'd drop it.
No, I, I completely agree.
Thank you, Mr. Bernath.
Yeah. No, I mean, but again, that process is not an easy one, right? Like, getting it down to where you understand yourself well enough to be able to articulate it in so few words, right? Is really hard, right? And I really like the concept and your plans about getting together and digging into it, right? And I know, like, been lots of parts of lots of organizations that hire lots of fancy external consultants and spend like hundreds of thousands of dollars in developing a mission statement. You think, what a waste, right? But it's actually really valuable when you can get behind something so clearly with everybody on the team.
Yep.
Right?
And I think part of that is actually talking about the vision, values, and principles
Exactly.
to start with.
Yeah, yeah. That's where you got to start, right? And I, and I think reflecting in where our current context is as well, right? Because, you know, since those are written, I think we have a different view of, you know, education. I mean, think about eight or nine years ago, like, things were not changing as fast, right? You know, there's a lot of things that weren't as part of the educational experience or where we kind of, we thought we were going. So, I'm totally on board with this, right? And I really like that concept of a discussion to kind of flush it out. I'm looking forward to hearing what comes back from the buildings and, and the staff, and looking forward to be really active and engaged in that. It has to happen.
I, I think it's interesting because, you know, I just did a whole college search, and, and so, there, I was always looking at different colleges and what they said, you know? IU's happens to be fulfill the promise. I'm still trying to figure out what the promise is, but, but, you know, that's up to the individual, I think. But it does say something about an organization. So, I'm excited about going down this road. Jen, any thoughts?
I, I thought you looked at me like, oh, okay.
No, no, no. I was just agreeing.
Oh.
Agree.
Okay.
Yep.
Final state, our final comments or? Are you excited about that path?
Yeah, absolutely.
Excellent. All right.
Almost as much as you.
That might be difficult. So, the next staff report was going to be about the OES survey. We had a little bit of a glitch from the standpoint of the 10 additional questions were only available in the first year of implementation, and that they have eliminated now that ability to add 10 additional questions. So, what we're doing is we're going to go back and try and figure out how we can still do it in either a parallel perspective with the OES. If, we've actually asked if we could pay to include it into the OES because they talked about the cost being prohibitive. And then if neither of those are an option, how do we do it independently? So, we've been working on some of the questions. I put them in the communication to you last week. We're still looking at other national survey questions that could be used for comparison perspectives, but it is something that kind of was an unanticipated reaction when we contacted them about what the steps were. We thought that that was going to be something that we could do, and it's not. It's not an option for us. So, I will pass on that aspect of the staff reports and, and wrap up our staff reports. Do you have any questions about the OES survey?
I think you did some great groundwork there and things like that. Let us know what support, and we'll keep looking at those questions that were posed in case there's a way to implement them.
Excellent. Excellent.
Great. We've come to the part of the meeting where we entertain public comment. If you'd like to address the board, so you come to the podium, and you can speak for three to five minutes, state your name and address, and let us know what you're thinking. All right. Seeing as we have no comments, we'll move on. Tom, do you have a board report from the Granville Education Foundation?
Yes, I did not prepare any notes for it, though. We had a great meeting last week. The high, the, the big news is that whether there are grants due, I'm not sure how many officially came in. That was not available last Thursday.
I believe we have three or four in right now, but I think they're going to extend the window.
So, they are extending the window for just a few days to staff members who are watching in needs of resources from the GEF. They have, they're motivated to support the schools in a continuous way. I don't know if there's any other major significant updates from the process of the meeting.
I know that they are going to start their fall campaign soon, and so, you know, you may be getting information from a, a fundraising perspective.
They moved up the campaign to earlier in the fall instead of just before Christmas because there's just a lot of asks just before Christmas. So, we're hopeful that momentum of the beginning of the school year and the awareness will help drive community members to support it, and appreciate your help in communicating all the great stuff that GEF does.
That's it.
Action item?
Okay. Action item 10.01. We have the contract with KidSpace, which is our SAC program at the intermediate school and elementary.
Second?
Second. And the contract is exactly the same as last year.
Normally, we adjust the rates usually every other year, and we had to adjust them last year, so we leave, usually we've been leaving them the same for two years now.
And this is the rate charged to parents?
No, the rate that they pay to us to rent the space.
They pay to us to rent the space. How does that relate, just out of curiosity, to, well, I guess they would have to charge a lot more because they pay their staff and so forth as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it.
Any other questions? Take your role, please.
Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Mr. Janice.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Dr. Corman.
Aye.
Okay. The next item 10.02 is the Educational Service Center of Central Ohio Agreement.
So moved. That's Amy, and I'll second.
Okay. This is for the contracted service for the teacher of visually impaired, behavior specialist, and adapted physical education. We don't have the capacity to have them on staff as employees, so we contract with those services, for those services.
Any questions? Take your role, please.
Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Mr. Janice.
Aye.
Dr. Corman.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is 10.03. It's an approval of a lease with Denison University.
So moved.
Second. We are going to enter into a contract for $5 per year for a five-year term. There are two properties that abut our property at the high school camp, on the high school campus that we mow and maintain. This is just an agreement that recognizes that Denison still retains ownership of those.
Is that a rugby field or a practice field, or where are those?
No. These are above our fields in between the homestead and the, the district boundary, and then above the baseball field and the strip that is that gravel road. There's an easement there.
So, they're not really utilized by us to any extent and so forth, but we can help take care of them easier because we're driving around there anyway.
Correct.
Great.
Correct. And this is, I think, they're doing this broadly across the entire community so that they, because they have a lot of properties that other people cut and mow and do things to. They just want to make sure that people know that they still own them.
Checking the property.
Exactly.
Homeowners got these as well.
Yes.
So, it's not just businesses. Yeah, no, I got one too because my property abuts the woods. Yeah. And so, if you happen to mow a little section, you know, of it, they just, yeah. But same, same exact 25 bucks for five years, $5 a year just to be able to, you know, extend your property a little bit.
Price, isn't it usually $1 a year? It's still pretty expensive, isn't it?
Inflation.
Inflation, right.
Okay. I guess it's okay.
Any other questions? Take your role, please.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Janice.
Aye.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Dr. Corman.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. The next item is 10.04, Board Policy Adoption. This is, serves as a second reading and the approval of the listed policies that I went over at the last board meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Most of these are required by law.
What's the status of credit flex means testing?
When you say means testing.
Wasn't there a motivation or proposal to means test?
No, that's college credit.
College credit.
Yeah, that's college credit.
Different thing.
Yep.
I remember these.
Questions? Take your role, please.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Mr. Janice.
Aye.
Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Dr. Corman.
Aye.
Okay. The next area is the Consent Agenda, and we've added a couple of new sections to it, but I seek approval for 11.01A through G.
So moved. Six.
I'm sorry. Who moved?
Russ.
Okay. Russ, okay. Thank you. I'd like to highlight the fact that we have significant donations from the, many of our community support organizations and businesses, which is fantastic. We appreciate that. We have a grant award for the Land Lab of $5,000. Fantastic.
Which is that organization?
The
The Stream and Wetlands?
Stream and Wetlands Foundation.
It's a foundation, Ohio-based foundation, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Licking County.
Yeah, it's a Licking County organization.
Is it?
Yep.
Okay.
The club is the approval of the Gender Sexuality Alliance Club, which has been in existence for several years at the high school, but this year, they plan on doing fundraising. So, then you have to actually approve the club so that they can create the account from a fundraising perspective. We have the DC trip, and we have our typical volunteers and new staff and supplementals.
Questions are coming on the Consent Agenda?
Some very, very generous donations.
Yeah, fantastic.
See the support we've received.
Take your role, please.
Mr. Janice.
Aye.
Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Dr. Corman.
Aye.
Financial?
12.01, the monthly financial statement for us.
So moved.
Second?
The monthly statement, again, everything is looking pretty good for where we are expecting to be. If you just look on page four, the current fiscal year has improved from the May forecast on both the revenue and the expenditure side. The big thing on the expenditure side that is helping us going forward is the reduction from what we're expecting on our healthcare renewal, where that will be a 0% increase effective 1-1-17 for the year for both our medical and our dental, which is very good. 1-1-17 for the year for both our medical and our dental, which is very good.
Fantastic.
From where we have been, so we're pretty happy about that.
I'd like to highlight the fact that we went through a rebidding of our insurance relationship with Gallagher. We have interviewed different groups. Gallagher really went to work for us with Medical Mutual and our benefits providers to get us that zero, so I think they did a very good job.
Yeah.
So appreciate their work.
Is that a good, particularly good year of utilization, too?
Better.
Utilization is much better. Still not great, but much better.
Okay.
But a lot of it was, we did take a pretty big increase last year, and that helped fully fund it better.
But wasn't it just a lucky utilization year? It was not out of the normal?
No, it's not, no. As a matter of fact, the utilization is probably still historically a little bit high, but it was really, really high.
Right.
And so.
Yeah.
Which is better funded. On the revenue side, we have both real and public utility property taxes higher than we have been anticipating. The real estate taxes, and we'll see that in the last page, there's a little more detail. The big thing is because our largest taxpayer making their payment on time, which since they hadn't done that in a couple of years, they did not build in to the forecast and actually made the payment on time, so that's why we're above, mostly why we're above forecast there. The public utility, again, if you look, you know, the growth is a lot because we've had that big increase in the valuation that we've known about for a while now, which is why we're getting the big amounts of growth. If you look on the revenues, we have 35.8% of the revenue in through August. The last two years, we've had 31 point, or 35.1 and 35.7, so we are right on target with that. On the expenditure side, at 17%, we are right where we have been in the past. Our big area still on the expenditure side is purchase services is still running high. Couple of things going on there. We did pay two electric bills in August, which we don't normally do, but because of the timing of the Labor Day holiday and the due date, we had to pay it in August to make, to make sure it was paid by the due date because of where the long weekend fell in. So that's still pushing us a little bit high. And remember, there will be natural growth in there, a little higher because of the contract with GCA that replaced DMS, and we've taken, you know, Frank has gone back to work for them, so that's, yeah, we've lost him in salary, and he's in the purchase services now, and they're also taking on some costs that we've taken on in the past, so that's inflating that a little bit, and we'll continue to do that. For the month of August, again, nothing really substantial. Our expenditures were about $77,000 below expectation, but 69 is that, it's because I had built in the expectation of moving the money from, to pay for the rest of the tennis court project, and we didn't do that in August. As a matter of fact, one of the later resolutions you'll have is authorizing me to move the money from the operating fund to the PI fund to finish, to make the last payment on the tennis courts. So that's really where all the savings in the spending was. If you look at our cash flow, every month except for January of 2018, are we at or above the board policy. Cash in the bank, we're at $15.1 million at the end of August. That is our high point of the cycle. We have all our property taxes in now, and we'll begin spending those down over the next four months, five months before we get the first half settlement next year. If you look at, the last page is a real property tax summary because the settlement is done now. Again, where we're seeing the big jump, if you look in the top chart, the two numbers that are circled, and that's our current collection rate, meaning the rate of people of paying on time in Class II, which is our business property taxpayers, you'll see that jump from 82% last year to 95%. This year, that is a combination of two things. One is the correction that the county auditor made to our 15 numbers because they were overinflated. Essentially, they had valuation in there that didn't exist, which makes the collection rate look lower because we weren't collecting money naturally on property that didn't exist but was in our base. And then again, the, the large taxpayer making their payment on time, and the other business, none of the other business taxpayers really falling off, so we've jumped up to 95%, which is the highest we have been in a number of years, which is good. You see, our residential collection rate did jump by a percentage point also from 97.3 to 98.3, and again, that is because of the auditor's correction of removing some valuation, about $4 million of valuation that was on the books that didn't really exist again. And so that brought the collection rate up because we are now collecting what, the same amount, what we're expecting, what we're collecting has gone down a little because the valuation is now back to normal.
Now, the adjustment in that value, will that be captured in the funding formula? Because it actually makes us poorer.
It makes us poorer.
But you've advocated to try and get that changed, but it hasn't been placed into a bill yet.
No, it has.
Oh, it has?
The language is in House, House Bill 2, Senate Bill 2.
Senate Bill 2.
Senate Bill 2, which is now at the House. My understanding is that it will move quickly after the election.
Good.
And so the language is in there. It has been signed off on by the Chair of the Education Committee and the Speaker. As a matter of fact, I talked to the Speaker's aide a couple of weeks about it. He called me about it, and we make sure we're still on track, so what that'll do is it should change in November, and it's retroactive still to last year, to 16, so they'll go back and recalculate our state share index for 16. Now, that's not going to have any impact on us because we were on the guarantee, and they will recalculate for this year, which again, because we're modestly on the guarantee, it will not have an impact for us. It has an impact starting next year because I am anticipating we will be on the formula as of right now next year. You know, it's a, you know, it's a big enough issue for us. It's really a big issue in Heath and Newark. They were much more heavily impacted by the problems that were going on than we were. So Heath, they were, for them, it was, they were overstated by 6% on their value, their overall valuation, they had 6% that was not actually there, so it was making, having a really big impact on them. You know, for us, it was about 2, 2.5%. So that, again, everything I know is that will change retroactively and going forward, which is what we're trying to do with that.
Mike, as far as we know, that, that adjustment in the valuation is finished and comprehensive, it's not just one bite of the apple and the?
It is, no. They have gone back and they have figured out the error that was in there, and they have got it back so that the bills are matching the abstracts, which is where, that's where the?
Okay. So we don't think there's more to come?
No, it was a, it was a one, it should be a one-time fix, and once it's fixed, it kind of stays fixed because the way the abstract works is, the abstract is only reflect, in one year is reflecting change from the prior year. So once they have the base fixed, it's only going to change based on actual changes. And that, as far as I know, that has been accomplished now.
Thank you.
It was accomplished for 15.
Actually, Heath and Newark should thank Mike, too. I mean, seriously. That's what I like about Mike is he looks at the aggregate picture, and it doesn't matter if it helps us or helps somebody else, he makes it right, so, and he's done a good job of advocating that perspective. So again, I give him credit.
Thank you. So that's really, you know, that's really, it, you know, overall, we're expecting more property taxes than we have been in the May forecast, again, mostly because of that higher current expect, the current collection rate in our business property. That's really the highlight. We'll take a lot more detailed look at this next month when we do the five-year forecast. Questions?
No, thank you.
Take your role, please.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Mr. Janice.
Aye.
Dr. Cornman.
Aye.
12.02 is the appropriation resolution, which seems not to have made, the actual resolution seems not to have made it into the folder, I thought. It was by everybody, it did not make it. This is the permanent appropriation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
It act, if you could see it, it actually, it actually looks no different. The only, the only major difference from the temporary appropriation is in Fund 004, which is a capital fund, to more comprehensively reflect the energy of roof projects. We have the roof project in the, yeah, we had the roof project in the original appropriation because we knew we were going to be doing that at some point. Because we did not know the scope of the energy project at the time, we were preparing it back in June, I did not include it at all. Now that we do know the scope of it, we have to appropriate the money for it. That's really the only major change in that, you know, it's a minor tweaking now that we have our actual federal allocations for this year, so there's some minor tweaking in there, but those are the only real changes to the appropriation from the temporary one from back in June.
Any questions? Take your role, please.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Mr. Janice.
Aye.
Dr. Cornman.
Aye.
Thank you. 12.03, the resolution approving transfer of funds.
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
This is not new. We have talked about this. This is for the additional infrastructure work that was needed to complete Keith's tennis courts.
That's okay, we got Reading's playground, we've got Keith's tennis courts.
Which apparently look very nice.
Ooh.
But this, you know, the plan was to move, you know, to take the $76,000 out of our cash balance to move to the PI fund to pay for the additional costs that were needed to keep the water from seeping up into the tennis courts. This will just allow us to make, to actually make the transfer because now that the courts are complete, we need to be paying the final bills.
Any questions? All right, take your role, please.
Mr. Janice.
Aye.
Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Dr. Cornman.
Aye.
Thank you. The last one, 12.04, is approval of a post issuance compliance policy, and this is for district debt, for issuance of debt.
So moved.
Second.
One thing with this, normally with policies, you know, we give a first reading and a second reading. This will constitute both readings. You do have, I did place a copy of it in your folders before the meeting. I'm sorry it was so late. We just got, I just got out of the language on Friday. Basically, this is saying that we will comply with applicable federal and state laws for issuing debt and making our payments and, and things like that. It's something that the bond council requires us to do, and this will be a permanent policy. And this will govern not, this governs not only this lease purchase, but this will govern any future debt issuances if we, if we do have them. Just saying, this is the policy we will follow, which is the policy that was designed by our bond council to be in compliance.
But it's motivated by the energy project, so this is the first time?
Well, actually, we should have done it last year, and somehow, when we did the refund, that refunding, and I think the timing, my guess is what happened, and it's my fault that we didn't, it was, I think it was during the period when I was just coming back and here part-time from my surgery.
Yeah.
And I think somehow I missed getting it on, so it's, we?
But it will apply, the same policy will apply.
If the same policy applies to that, it applies to this, if we ever decide to issue debt for something else, if we refund something else, it's just that when we issue the debt, these are the policies we will follow.
Right.
Post issuance to stay in compliance with all applicable laws.
Any other questions? Take your role, please.
Mr. Janice.
Aye.
Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Miller.
Aye.
Dr. Cornman.
Aye. I'll do your turn.
Second.
Ms. Deeds.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Mr. Janice.
Aye.
Dr. Cornman.
Aye. Please.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to cut you off.
Okay. So Jeff, you excited about this mission statement?
I am.
Me, too. Well, I totally am, right? But it's like?
To Licking County, and I think it adds value, and it's good to get the use perspective on some of the issues that are part of our day-to-day society. So congratulations, ladies. Come on up. I just love how it's sort of sitting there.
I'm going to want a photobomb.
Excellent. Congratulations. Tonight, we are also commending our Granville High School English teacher, Eevee Smith, who received both the Jody Van Tine Outstanding Educator Award and the Transal Rap Excellence in Education Award. Eevee was nominated for the Jody Van Tine Award by a parent who said that she taught patience, perseverance, and doing what needed to be done, and that their student would have dropped out of school if it weren't for Eevee. The Jody Van Tine Award was established to recognize distinguished and innovative educational contributions made by educators in the Granville Exempt Village School District. This award is given annually by the Granville Education Foundation to commemorate the high ideals that characterize the life and career of the late Jody Van Tine, who was a second grade teacher at GES. Eevee is so deserving of this honor, and she, she participated in the Transal Rap Excellence in Education Award presentation last Monday as well, so she has been making the rounds. But it's pretty unique, but it's happened two years in a row. Jill Ash won both awards last year, and now Eevee's winning both awards this year, both independent awards from one another, which I think is, kind of summarizes their contribution to our school district. And I know as a parent and as a superintendent, I've seen the byproducts of Eevee's teaching and the writing process, so congratulations and well-deserved. I swear the board doesn't have to stop.
She's on to us.
We've got these wheelchairs for her.
And I have to say, usually, you know, I am towered over. It's kind of nice to be the tall one. That concludes our commendations, so I know you're welcome to stay, but the board is about to do their work for the night, but if you want to run, we'll let you. Okay, I'm sure you guys have homework and other things to do. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay. All right. I do not see Justin, so.
We're going to shuffle a little bit?
Yep, we'll shuffle and move to.
I do not see Justin, so.
We're gonna shuffle a little bit.
Yep, we'll shuffle and move to staff reports. So Mr. Bernath is going to give us an update on the recently released local report card. So as that is getting queued up, we'll hit the lights and rock and roll.
Okay, we'll try to make this succinct as possible. There was a lot of information in the report card, and a lot of it is difficult to understand at times, at least in terms of how they got two different letter grades. So as you know, the report cards were released last week, and this is all based on state testing from last year. Just as a quick reminder, we were completely air tested last year. There was no more Park at that point. The AIR tests were math in ELA in grades three through high school, science grades five, eight in biology, and then the social studies in grades four, six, US history and government. You'll see the OGT making its last appearance in the state report card this year. From this point on, you'll see no, no more, no more references to the OGT. That is going to become a dinosaur after this year. It's still a graduation requirement for this year seniors, or the last group that needs to pass all five parts of that to get a diploma. After that, it's the new state test. We are back on a normal release time for the report card, so you can expect this in the fall of every year moving forward. I'm sure that will fluctuate back and forth a little bit as things change, but you know, we probably expect a report on this in every September board meeting moving forward. And the report card this year has six components, and these are kind of the big areas that eventually in 2018, you'll actually get one grade for each school. At least that's the plan as it stands right now. And those six components are listed right here. What we'll do tonight is walk you through each of those components and then how we received the letter grade that we did in those areas and what it tells us and maybe what it doesn't tell us as well. So this is the report card for our district, obviously three As, two Cs, and a B. It's interesting to note, and I'm sure you've seen a lot of newspaper reports about the report card and so forth, there were only 28 out of 608 districts in the state that didn't have any As, Bs, or Cs, or had, excuse me, let me say that again. There were 20 in the districts in the state that had no Ds or Fs on their report card. So, you know, we look at this and say, oh my gosh, we had two Cs. Well, we know what those mean and how we're progressing in those areas. Only 28 out of 608 had a report card without Ds and Fs like we did. So it kind of puts us in a, in a different category compared to the rest of the schools in the state. The first thing that we'll look at is the achievement component. And the achievement component is, has two different parts to it. One of those is the district indicators map. So this is basically, the state sets a standard for the number of students that you have to pass. Each of these given tests that are all listed here by grade level and what subject they are, and if you have more kids that pass that percentage, you meet that indicator. There's also another indicator that they didn't know where to put, so they, I kind of lumped it in with the rest of these indicators called the gifted indicator. To meet the gifted indicator, you have to serve and identify your gifted students at a certain percentage. They have to have a PI score above 116. You can see our PI score on the next one will be 104.4, but for your gifted students to meet this indicator, it has to be 116, and you have to have at least a C or better in terms of progress. And as a district, we met all three of those for this year, which is why we had that nice little lovely yellow check mark there. But it's actually made of three subcomponents for that one indicator, one of 29 that you see here on the board. The math, too, is NA because you have to have at least 10 students taking a test for it to count. So we only had one student that goes to an alternate placement take that test. That's why that doesn't count. So this year, we met 28 of 29 indicators. You'll notice that eighth grade language arts did not meet the indicator. They were 72.4%, and the benchmark was 74%. Oddly enough, that was good enough for third highest in central Ohio and top five in the state. There were less than 20 schools that met the eighth grade indicator. The benchmark for that test, for whatever reason, seemed to really not match the performance, like some of these other tests did in English Language Arts. So did meet the indicator, but still one of the top scores in the state.
What do you think accelerated students in that case or in other cases in general? Are they ranked with their grade or are they ranked with the class that they took?
They're ranked. So that's kind of a, it's actually both. They are ranked in terms of the building they take their test in. That's where the PI score counts on the next slide that we'll get to.
Okay.
But for the actual test, it's the test they took. So for example, seventh graders who are accelerated to eighth grade English are counted into this test. So the seventh grade has students that skip over that grade due to acceleration.
Right.
And so they would have, not have that particular.
Same with math and science or whatever other class that is that.
So on this table, it's the grade level that they're taking, not the grade level that they're in.
Great.
On the next slide, it's the grade level that they're in.
Yeah. We have a lot of that shuffling that has different implications there.
Exactly.
Just so the board is aware, the state standard, the percentage, is actually set by the State Board of Education, which gets a report from the testing company about what their recommended passage rate is, and it's usually based off of one or two standard deviations from the norm. And so the state board set the threshold for the eighth grade ELA, which, as Mr. Bernath referenced, doesn't really necessarily even come close to even a bell-shaped curve.
What's the data set for that, for that recommendation? Is it statewide? Is it national or?
It's.
It was actually determined before the tests were ever given.
Yes.
What they did was, so you remember the cut scores from Park last year were like in the 60s? Like in that case, it was around 64 for Park. They want these, these percentages right here that are not at 80% will all, whoops, I threw my button. Will all jump to 80% next year. So all these 73s, 72s, they'll jump to 80. That number right there represents halfway between last year and 80%. That was the mathematics statistical analysis behind it.
Okay.
So leave it at that.
Thank you.
I did analyze, I analyzed the statewide data after I saw the results for the eighth grade English Language Arts. And when you look at it from a straight mathematical standpoint, neither the standard nor the scores made any sense at all. I mean, if you look, if you look statewide, well, they didn't.
No, you're right. No, I'm just laughing because we said that to our new state superintendent.
Yeah, because if you look, if you look at the scores statewide and you look at them relative to all the other scores, I mean, the whole state was like 10 or 12 percentage points lower on that test than every other test in there. And I'd actually talked to somebody at ODE because I thought maybe they had a data problem.
Right.
And I did talk to the person who compiled this at ODE, and what he said was, he said a couple of things that were actually kind of disturbing. What he said was that they were aware of the issue, they made aware to the state board, and the state board chose not to do anything about it. And I also said, you realize how much below the whole state, yeah, all the other scores of the whole state is his. Well, we didn't look at, we didn't compare all the districts in the state when we looked at the analysis. So.
So anyway.
Anyways, that, I know that's a not met, and we have not had very many of those over the course of the years. It's honestly nothing to be concerned with. They're performing at a very high level compared to the rest of the state and our similar school districts. They actually scored better than the average for our similar schools, and we, you know, our similar schools are, you know, the cream of the crop in the state. So, you know, it's unfortunate they not met it. The teachers are not thrilled about that, trying to explain that to them that it's, you know, just keep doing what you're doing, and you'll be fine. It will, it is interesting to note, though, going back to that, that these 70s become 80s. We've, you know, we've had our work cut out for us in English Language Arts in grades three through eight to make that 80% benchmark. Whether that comes to fruition or not, you know, it's kind of wait and see at this point, especially given the backlash on the results for this year. But it will give us a reach target to go for, for sure, if they move forward. So this percentage right here is something you want to kind of keep in the back of your mind. 28 out of 29 indicators is where they came up with that. That's half of your achievement component grade. The other half is for your performance index, and this has really not changed over the years. You'll notice we still had 17 untested students. That's not a big percentage when you're talking about 3,000 and some tests, but it's actually enough to keep us away from an A overall in achievement. Had those students tested, we would have had an overall A in achievement, and that would have put us at one of seven or eight school districts in the state. But everybody, every school has some untested, and that's not, that's not completely abnormal. So those results, I mean, if you look at this, the majority of our students are scoring the advanced accelerated. To get advanced plus, a student has to be accelerated, taking a test above their current grade level, and they have to score advanced. So if you have a fifth grader taking sixth grade math and they score advanced, they can jump into the advanced plus category. So that's the numbers indicative of the acceleration that takes place for students after third grade. So 104.4, you'll want to kind of remember this percentage right here, a perfect score according to the state is 120, even though you could get 130. All of your kids were advanced plus. If every student scored advanced, they say a perfect score is 120 on this, so they take 104 divided by 120 to get 87%. So once you have those two percentage numbers, remember the other one was 96.6, you have to plug it into these two charts. Now, you'll, you'll not see these two charts anywhere on the state report card for the public to view, so you kind of have to learn this by osmosis or have these charts in front of you. So the indicators, two percent points, remember I said we were 96.6? That gives us 4.75 points out of 5, but the indicator is only weighted 25% of the total achievement component. So we take this 4.75 that we got right here, multiply it by 25 points, 25%, excuse me, and we get 1.188 points on this side of the equation. So that's the, that's the indicators part. On the performance index part, remember we were at 86% or 87%? So that puts us right here at 3.75. We take 75% of that and get 2.813. Then we add those two together, and we get this nice round number of four, which we then plug into this chart down here at the bottom, and you'll see that we had to have a 4.125 to get an A. Had we had 0.5% more, we would have had a four here, which would have bumped this up to a 4.125 and would have had an A. So we were that close, and gives us something to reach for potentially next year.
I, I'd like to highlight the fact that the local report card was created to inform the community of the quality of the school district in a layman's type perspective. I think, I think they've missed the mark on this from more of a convoluted weighting system and a calculation perspective. It just doesn't make any sense.
Most people don't get past the letters, though, right?
Right.
They never get anywhere.
Exactly.
And like, what are the two sets of tests that go into both of these different ones? Or what is the data that feeds in front of it?
These are the indicators test. So this is our 28 out of 29.
Right.
On that one chart, and then this is your PI score. So that percentage that was given for both of those numbers, that 96.6 is plugged into here.
Right. So but driving back to like the, the component information that actually the students took testing to get these things.
Sure.
What are the difference between the tests that are used in both categories? Or is there, is it the same information?
Same test.
Same test. So like, the same students take the same tests and get two very different grades, right? Like a, a, an A and a B, right? Just based on the way that they spin those numbers?
So let me, let me jump back. I think it's easier to explain.
Right, just like, I was just trying to like make sure I kind of internalized that.
So like, if I was in, let's say I'm in a school district where we have 156 kids pass the third grade reading test. That's the only test we get. We'll just say it's just one test. You get to understand. And all 156 of those students score proficient. All right? What this is a measure of is just did you get an X number of percentage kids to proficient or better?
So it's just a bar crossing?
Yeah, exactly. It's an achievement bar. It's exactly what it is. The performance, the performance index then says, okay, you got all these students to this bar, did you get any of them beyond that bar? So you get bonus points above proficient. Like if they score proficient, you get one point for every test that a student scores proficient. But if they score accelerated, then you get 1.1 points. They score advanced, you get 1.2. Whereas if they go to basic or limited, you see it really, really penalizes you for 0.6 and 0.3. So this performance index is a measure of how many kids are you getting beyond proficient as well as too proficient, where the other previous one is just how many are proficient or better.
Right.
So this is how many kids do you have at each level is the easiest way to understand it.
Ryan, I remember reading your, your memo on this. That 104.4, 104.4 on the PI was in the top, what, 2% of the state?
Yeah, so the next thing is from the achievement component, we got a B, but that puts us in the top 2% in the state, ranked 11th actually overall, and that's the highest we've ever been. So moving in the right direction with that. They also have come out with performance index of different subgroups, and you'll be, we hear a lot more conversation about subgroups as we come along here. Students with disabilities, we were top 15 in the state. Gifted students PI, we were top 40 in the state. Gifted inputs, we were top 35. That's how many, not we, how many gifted students we identify, but how many we also serve as well. And then 16 of the 23 subjects that you saw on that big long list, the OGT, we didn't count anymore because that's not really a subject test. That's a grade test. So the single subjects, 16 of the 23 were in the top 40 in the state. So we did really well on that piece, and it's, it's a different bar. It's a much higher bar. They went from five feet to seven feet in the high jump real quick, and it gives us some reach goals as a district.
I think overall, the main takeaway is you're, you've looked now at three different assessments, okay? You had the OAA, you had the Park, and now you have the AIR. And no matter what the assessment is, you're seeing consistent performance from our students no matter what assessment. And what our message to the staff has always been, teach well, and the assessments will take care of themselves, okay? You know, going back to the learning foundations, what do kids need to know and be able to do? How do you certify mastery of content and do it in a way that is aligned with the rigor and relevance that kids need in order to achieve at high levels? So no matter what assessment they're kind of putting in front of our kids, our kids are performing at high levels. And they continue to, you know, two years ago, on the OAA, we were in the top 4.4% of the state. Last year on Park, a new assessment, more difficult, more rigorous, we were in the top 3%.
3.3 or something.
And, and now with this assessment, we're in the top 2%. So it's an indication that we're pretty stable and stable at a high level, which is good. But we always look for, you know, as much as we're tongue-in-cheek in some of our commentary, we are always looking at the data to see what questions we can glean from that and what opportunities we can use to inform our practice. But I think it is just a snapshot, and it's a limited snapshot, and the calculations, you need to deeply understand in order to actually gain that understanding of what it's telling you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
The biggest thing with that is, you know, since the test have changed, the only way you can really see is how you're stacking up one year to the next is to look at your state ranking, because you can't look at the PI score and say, well, is that going up or down? It's a different test.
Right.
So state ranking has become something we've done for a while, but it's really beneficial in this case because it changed.
I think that's a really good point, that we need to figure out a message very carefully. It's not like I cared personally necessarily how we compared other districts in the state. I think we have different goals, not like I, these, these numbers are really our fundamental things. We've got some important benchmarks. But I think that given the dynamics of them, right, the more we can kind of come back to that, it gives the community and all of us some confidence that like, again, no matter what they throw at us, you spoke very well to it, right? You know, we're still in this kind of upper echelon from whatever test they are, but really look at what our students do otherwise, because that's the important thing.
And I think that is where the quality profile, when we talk about the other aspects of what our kids do from youth civic leadership to the work in the, in the Granville Solvents Project, or the land lab, or, you know, the permaculture conversation, I mean, all of those things are equally, if not more valuable, long-term for kids. And, and so our quality profile really will highlight those aspects of our organizational success and things that drive continuous improvement.
So the next component that we'll dive into is the K3 literacy component. This one is often misunderstood. The K3 literacy component deals with the students that you see here in red at each grade level. And what it's a measure of, it's not a measure of literacy for all students in grades K through three. It's a measure of students who are deemed off-track at a certain grade level, and then through your interventions in that course of the year, are they off-track the next year still? So it gives you a school year plus a summer to intervene with students who are struggling with early literacy, which is, as we all know, very foundational. next year still? So it gives you a school year plus a summer to intervene with students who are struggling with early literacy, which is, as we all know, very foundational. So when you're looking at this, the C is not indicative of K3 literacy district-wide. It's a small group of students, but a very important group of students that we need to spend some extra time with to make sure that they have that firm foundation so that they can want to be successful in their education and life. So the way this is calculated is in 2014-15, we had kindergarteners that come in and taken a diagnostic. And all students take this in K3. It's called the MAP test. If you have children, I'm sure you've heard of it. And they can, they get a score on that map, but it also, there are certain scores that are called on-track. And if they're below a certain level, they're off-track. And those off-track students, we had 10 in 14-15 in kindergarten. The following year in 15-16, so this would have been last fall, they took the MAP test again. 6 of those 10 improved to on-track. Now, some other students may have gone from on-track to off-track, but they don't count until this year. This is looking at that group, that cohort from one year to the next only. Likewise, from 14-15 in first grade, we had 15 students that were off-track. 11 of them were back on-track by the time second grade started. And what you do is you do that for K1 and then 1-2 and then 2-3. And then there's an additional measure in 3rd grade. They look at the beginning of the 3rd grade year in the current year, so this is 15-16 over here. How many 3rd graders are off-track? 17. And then how many actually end up passing the ELA test? It's not just the reading test. This is, this is incorrect. It's not the reading test. It's the entire ELA reading and writing test combined and they have to pass it. And then if you have students that you didn't put on reading improvement monitoring plans or RIMPs, as they're called, you get actually a deduction here. So if we would have had 5 here, they would have actually taken 5 from our numerator down here at the bottom. You see, we had zero. We're very conservative in our approach to RIMPs with students starting in kindergarten, not just in 3rd grade. You can, student can be on-track, but they still need a reading improvement plan and they need some help to move forward. So if you add up all the students that started the previous year or at the beginning of their 3rd grade year off-track, that's our denominator, which is 50. Our numerator is how many we got back on-track or in this case, passed the 3rd grade at OAA. 28 divided by 50 for 56%. And then you plug it into this lovely chart down here at the bottom. This is actually, actually makes some sense in terms of these percentages because if you look at that, like how did they come up with these? 43.8% is the state average. They made that the lowest level of a C from the previous year. So we were slightly above state average in getting kids who are off-track to on-track. So it is students who are struggling with early literacy and that's what this is a measure of. We actually put a lot of stock in this. These are students that we want to identify and students that we need to identify and give them some early intervention in the, not just the reading, but also the writing process as they go through their early school years.
And this is also tied to our child find process from a special education perspective. You know, a lot of the kids that start out in the kindergarten off-track area, you know, there might be other things that are going on with them. And so, you know, it's really a comprehensive look at all of our kids. But I think one of the things that I struggled with initially was most people, when they look at 56%, think of, that's not very good. That's like really low, but that's a C. So it's kind of counterintuitive from the standpoint of, one, the N size of how many students we're talking about. Because K3 literacy assumes that it's all kids, but it's really only the 50 kids that were identified as off-track. So I think it's somewhat of a difficult measure, but it is something that we utilize to measure progress.
The other thing too is you'll notice a lot of districts have NR for this, not rated. And that's based on, if you have less than 5% of your students in kindergarten that are off-track, then you actually don't get a grade for this entire component. So it's worth some research to look at some of the districts that are NR and try to figure out that they actually have less than 5% of their students off-track when only 30% of their kids are passing the 3rd grade assessment later on. But that's...
So I want you to fully grasp what Mr. Burnett just alluded to. This is not consistent from one district to the next. There is choice in what diagnostic you are using.
And last year, the choice was 15 choices. It's down to 5 this year. So we'll start to get more consistency, I think, in this measure. But this is something we take very seriously and this is a report that I do think is worthy and worthwhile for us.
Right. So there, we could have easily picked an easy assessment to get an NR, okay? We value the process of putting students on a RIMP and monitoring their progress. Progress monitoring is an essential component to not missing a student and a potential issue that could be developing. So it is something that we prioritize.
And also, just to put it in perspective, up in the Plain Dealer last week, they had 6 counties in northeast Ohio and had the grades for all of them. There was not a single district that had an A. There were 2 districts in the 6 counties that had a B. The most, the prominent ones were DNF. So again, that puts the C in perspective, that still puts us in the top, well into the top half, if probably not higher than the state.
And that, that one though is not about the letter grade, that's about the kids. And are those kids getting on-track and then do they stay on-track? You know, the worst thing is for students to be off-track, then on-track, then back to off-track and they're just bouncing back and forth. They're not making that consistent growth. Moving forward to one that's actually pretty straightforward, graduation rate. Did students graduate in 4 years or 5 years or not? That's pretty much all there is to it. But there are 2 pieces to it and both of these combined give us the letter grade. So this is the 4-year graduation rate. Graduation rate is the majority of the percentage of the, of the indicator, but the 5th grade graduation is 40%, 64. So, but we're going to, you know, in the foreseeable future and in the past, this has always been an A for us. Our students graduate, they finish on time. You will notice this number is a little bit lower and a lot of that is due in part to we allow some students who are on IEP to stay for that 5th year. They technically then don't graduate, even though they've passed all the state tests and they met all the requirements for us to continue to serve them, they're counted as a non-graduate. So you're always going to see that 4th year graduation rate for us be a little bit lower because of that. And that's all about what's doing best for those individual students. And if it dings us a little bit for the graduation rate, then so be it. It's not a big deal and it's not something we're going to lose any sleep over. Okay, gap closing. On par with the achievement in terms of its calculation, so this would be interesting. Gap closing is all about looking at your subgroups and are those subgroups reaching predetermined percentage goals? This is really a remnant of No Child Left Behind. That's kind of where this all came about, and looking at different subgroups. So the first thing is, these are all the different subgroups that our district could have and that the state would identify. So there's all students economically disadvantaged, things identify students by race, by IEP, by English language proficiency and so forth. For it to be a subgroup that counts in this calculation, you have to have at least 30 students. The N size becomes very important. And the N size is something that they're talking about changing in the new ESSA requirements about lowering. The problem with that is, you know, if you're, if you're going to lower requirements, then you could actually start to identify individual kids in certain districts. So we have 5 categories on here that count, in quotes, for this measurement. All students, economically disadvantaged, multiracial, white and IEP students. We have at least 30 in each of those areas. For the English Language Arts proficiency, they took the English Language Arts scores from grades 3 through high school. And you had to get 74% of the students to pass in each of those subcategories to get the points for it. And they're, they're based on a 100-point scale for each one. So we have 500 points total. We met for all students and we met for white students and we just missed it for students that are multiracial, IEP students. You can see we have a lot of work to do in that particular area as well. So we met 2 out of the 5 for 2 out of 500 or 40% is how they come up with that piece. Now, there's 3 parts to this component. So that's just the first with English Language Arts. And there's also a particip, excuse me, a participation requirement for this, but we met that this year. That was an issue last year and we had a lot of opt-outs. With the math gap closing, the goal this time is 68.5%. We have the same subgroups that have 30, although their numbers are a little different now because at the high school level, some kids take certain tests and not other tests depending on where they are in their sequence. So we've got all students met, economically disadvantaged students met, multiracial students met, white students met. And so that would be 400 out of 500. But if you look, we have 415.1. And that's because even though our IEP students didn't meet the 68.5, we actually improved by 1.3% over last year. So because we improved, we don't get the full 100 points, but we get a little bonus for at least improving and we get a percentage out of that 100. And we got 15.1 points out of 100. I can share that calculation with you, but it's really not necessary. It just adds to the confusion on this. But there is a formula that they have that gets that 15.1 to reach that. So if you take 415 divided by 500, you get 83%. And then the final category with gap closing is graduation. Now, these numbers are much smaller because it's only your senior class. And, you know, we met both of those, so we scored 100 points there. So you take those 3 percentages that we went through, 40, 83, and 100, add them up, divide by 3, and you get an average of 74.3, which puts us in the C category right here. And that's how we ended up with our C. It's interesting to note that 87% of the state received an A in gap closing this year. So one of the things that, that made me think of is, if I had a teacher or if I was a teacher and 87% of my students failed the test, would I blame the student or rather for the test or the measurement? And I think that's one of the things that the state is feeling to do in this particular measurement. And it all goes back to the ELA. Remember how high those ELA passage scores were? Let me pull that back up here.
Is it the same bar for proficiency that's used in the...
Nope. Lost my chart.
Oh, there you go.
No, even the computer gave up on it.
So is it the same kind of test score that determines proficiency in both? Right? It's just broken out yet a different way?
And you saw how very close we were in a lot of different subjects in the ELA and that's why we were only at 40%. Usually in the ELA, we've been between 16 and 80%. So, you know, for example, you know, we were very close in that one subcategory. A couple more students would have passed the test. We would have had a B in, in gap closing and it wouldn't have told us anything different. That's the thing about it. So what is important out of this is we do look at subgroups and we do want our subgroups to not have gaps between all students and our biggest group, white students as well. So that's something that we do look at and it's something that's very important to us.
And, but the other thing that we do is we look at it in context with the other data and Mr. Burnett's going to talk a little bit about that. Because remember, there's achievement and then there's also progress. So you have to look at both of those in order to get a better picture of the aggregate performance of those, the different subgroups.
This has got a lot of people very upset, to say the least, among other things. Okay, prepared for success. This is a brand-new component this year. And really this is, what this is measuring is the college and career readiness of students. So the state has determined we can measure that in one of 3 ways. If a student earns an honors diploma, which means they have a certain ACT or SAT score, they take a rigorous course load in high school, and there's a couple where they have a fine arts credit and that sort of thing, that's one way they can be college and career-ready. They can have a remediation-free mark on the ACT or SAT. So for the ACT, that's an 18 in English, a 21 in reading and a 22 in math. For the SAT, that's a 430 in writing, a 450 in reading and a 520 in math. And they would have to meet all of those benchmarks in one test or the other. Or the third way is they can earn an industry-recognized credential, which for our students, they can only get through CTEC. So if they earn one of those 3 things, we get a point for that student. So this is a 2-year measure. This goes back, this is always going to be a year in arrears. So every time we see this, we have to think, okay, this is the last 2 years prior to the previous year.